Select Board back into open session at six thirty on February third, two thousand and twenty five. And the first thing we'll do is please if you would, your announcements.
All right. So taxes are due today. If you haven't paid them, I don't know what to tell you. They're due today. Just a reminder. There's going to be a meat raffle this Friday at seven P. M. at the Rod and Gun. The Hubbardston Lions Club is putting it on. That is again this Friday, seven P. M. at the Rod and Gun. The Lions Club Meat Raffle. Be there. There you go. All right, the nineteenth backyard chicken workshop at the Senior Center from six thirty to eight. It's being put on by the Agricultural Commission. And again, that is February nineteenth from six thirty to eight in the Senior Center, and it is a workshop about keeping chickens in your backyard. Best practices kind of stuff. February twenty second at seven A. M. on Ben's Pond, there is going to be a fishing derby. It's put on by the Rod and Gun. You do have to pre-register. You got to go through them. They have all the information on their Facebook page to get in contact with them and get signed up for that. But again, that is February twenty second at seven A. M. There are prizes involved, so see the different stuff that they got going on, but that's going to be on Ben's Pond. On March first is the deadline for any youth baseball for ages four to eight. They're looking for kids to sign up. Ready for the website? Hub Y B S dot sport N G I N dot com.
Can you give the one more time?
I am going to. Don't you fret on it. It's hub H U B B Y B S dot sport N G I N dot com. And again, the registration is closed on March first for youth baseball ages four to eight. And fair warning, excise taxes are going to be due March thirteenth. Those bills will be coming out soon. Just giving everybody a heads up.
Excellent.
Yeah, I'm hey, you know, I'm trying to help you out.
Thanks.
All right, Keep Hubbardson Beautiful is coming up on April nineteenth. So look out for more information about that. And we are having the Hubbardston Fair on June seventh with the rain date of the eighth from nine to two. I am currently taking applications for vendors, so you can find that on the town website under Special Events. And that's all I got for right now.
Thank you. Are there any questions, discussion, or do anyone else have any announcements to make at this time? Okay. Items, as it turns out, six and seven, excuse me. We'll be doing them at the same time, I guess, the poll hearings, so we'll move to those right now. And would you like to start it, or is he all set to go?
He's all set to go.
What's his name?
Mr. Will Fontaine.
Mr. Fontaine, you're up, if you will, please. Thank you.
So these polls, one for, one job is for Ragged Hill Road, and that's the one that I'm the engineer for. There are two new houses going in on Ragged Hill, I believe it's eighty and ninety, if I remember correctly. And the, we're doing just one pole line up one driveway, and it's going to feed both. But we just need one mid-span pole on the street to properly go up the driveway with the pole line. And then the poles on Williamsville Road are part of a D O T project. We've been working on a bridge at that spot, so we needed to move a number of poles over. I wasn't the engineer for it, but I did take a look at some of the plans. Looks like the D O T is having us do a couple temporary pole locations and then more permanent pole locations. Is just kind of redoing that pole area there for their project. So I think if you have any questions about that, I'd have to get answers from the either D O T or the outside contractor if you did the engineering for that.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, what's, what's, I'm looking at this map on Ragged Hill Road. Where's the pole we're talking about?
It would be the one on the left side of the street in between.
Is it the one near P thirty-four dash fifty?
No, it's, no.
Or dash twenty-five, I think.
Yeah, thirty-four dash twenty-five.
Thirty-four dash twenty-five.
Yep.
So what are these, what are these things that continue along into lot two?
Those are the proposed pole, pole locations for bringing power up the driveway.
The house is way back. It's way back. This is my neighbor.
The pole line is about seven hundred fifty feet long total, and then the house is another hundred fifty feet beyond that as well. It's a pretty long.
And you need, you need P thirty-four dash twenty-five to support that?
Correct. The other poles, one of them already has a junction off of it, actually for the neighbor's driveway. So we can't, or due to our safety standards, we're not supposed to use one pole for two purposes. Kind of a motto that we stick to. If you have a pole with too many, too many wires or equipment, it gets dangerous for the guys going out there. And then the pole after that, also, also equipment on it as well. Neither of them were in great alignment to be used either, so you know, we try to, we try to keep our lines straight as possible because if we have to use guy wires, not only does that have cost, it can, it can kind of disrupt the design if we need to get different views on from somebody, you know, guy wire school or property lines or interwetlands. Yes, so we try to avoid, avoid having to use too many, too many guy wires and other equipment.
Okay, understood.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? Okay, we'll need a motion for each one of these, so that, I don't think it matters which one we take first, but go with our agenda. So for the Williams Road, Williamsville Road, if we could have a motion basically to approve the installation of the requested utility pole on Williamsville Road as presented, pending any necessary conditions identified during the hearing.
Some vote.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. Similar motion for the Ragged Hill Road. If we could, motion to approve the installation of the requested utility pole on Ragged Hill Road Lot Two. Is that, okay, contingent upon confirmation of proper notification and adherence to all applicable regulations.
I can't do it. It's my neighbor.
Some moved.
One, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any discussion?
I do have a discussion point.
Okay, go ahead.
I was never notified.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask to Mr. Fontaine. Can you provide proof of notification and that you sent out the abutter's mail? And it's also come to our attention that National Grid may have not paid the last few invoices due to the town. Can you explain?
So usually what happens when a poll hearing is requested through National Grid, they send it. In the past, they used to send it to me, and I always send it to the town clerk, who then passes it on to me because it's my purview, being the select board. The past three poll hearings I've done since I started in July, we let you know that, okay, we'll put the public hearing notice in the newspaper and send out the abutters notices. However, it's usually at, you know, the behest of National Grid to pay for it in advance. It's part of our fee schedule for the town of Hubbardston. Because they hadn't paid the last few, I wasn't having the town fork over any more money to pay away, did the public hearing notice in the paper? But I said, you know, you guys need to do the public notices to the abutters, and you need to provide that proof of mailing, similar to what they do, our planning board does, and our other boards and committees do when, you know, we have a couple of invoices that have gone unpaid. And I was told in the email that they would be providing proof of mailing at the poll hearing that the abutters notice have been sent. I have now heard since that those abuttered notices have not been sent.
Do you know who you talked to? Because I think there was something, even on our end, because I only, basically, the process wasn't followed, I think, on our end. Who or the wrong person was notified? I'm not entirely sure what happened.
Yeah, I emailed the person who sent over these poll hearings originally to the town clerk.
Was it Alyssa?
I, I.
Was that thing ringing about?
I, it was a few Mondays ago, so I don't know off the top of my head their name.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I think.
But I can pull up that email and forward it to you if you'd like.
Sure, that would be great. And because I wasn't told about the, you know, having to present any proof of the abutters, of the abutters list or anything, I can definitely find out. And I, we have had a lot of, like, since last July, we've gone through three or four different clerks for our department. And the things that kind of, and it's happened in other towns as well, where things have kind of, the ball's been dropped where.
Now, Mr. Fontaine, how much pain it would us not approving these petitions here this evening due to the fact that we cannot legally hold a hearing that has not been sent to the abutters? Is this going to slow down the future homeowners significantly? Or does that not really matter? Because without the abutters notification, the public hearing is essentially null and void because not too many people that I know are reading the Gardener News anymore. And we didn't send the notices to their house because we didn't, hadn't received payment for prior notices. So that makes me think that this is kind of a pointless public hearing because the public was not notified that they could be heard. So.
Yeah, I would think that you probably, we should table this then at that point. And I'm going to follow back up with our clerk Alyssa, who I think was out, and there was another clerk from a different platform covering for her. And I, so I think, like I said, I think there was a miscommunication or they dropped the ball somewhere. And because I, again, like I said, I wasn't aware of this issue, and especially about the previous payments being missed. So I'm definitely going to bring that up.
Mr. Chair, in addition to the, to the requested table, the Ragged Hill Road poll petition, can I also ask that someone that was on the prevailing side of the Williamsville Road poll hearing, motion to reconsider it in an effort to table that as well?
Oh, you.
Anyone except for you that was on the prevailing side of that motion can motion to reconsider?
I would like to.
For Williamsville, so both of them were tabled.
I would like to reconsider the motion that I made from Williamsville now knowing that notices were not sent out.
Okay, that's in the form of a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion.
I would like to reconsider.
Well, second, okay, we'll do separately. We can do both at the same time.
You both, just table both.
Okay, so motion has been made in second to reconsider the passed motion on Williamsville Road. Could we have a similar motion to reconsider the Ragged Hill Road?
Nope, you don't need to reconsider Ragged Hill. You never considered it.
You don't need to. But do we need a motion to take?
We didn't, yeah, no, we, we had a motion, made it a seconded.
We made a motion. So I'd like to make a motion.
So you could either remove it.
Okay, yes.
Remove it.
Remove the motion, just.
Am I withdrawing the motion?
Yeah, you just withdraw the motion.
Yeah, just withdraw the motion.
I would like to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
On Ragged Hill Road.
Without any.
I didn't.
And table it.
Mr. Chair, I respectfully ask that at the request of National Grid and Mr. Fontaine, we table these two matters to a time where the abutters can be appropriately and legally notified.
So that's what we will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
So table.
I thought the other one got Emily sent out. I didn't realize it was just.
So is he also?
Mr. Fontaine, let's just ensure that we are meeting legal requirements and payment requirements in the future. Like, yeah, with all respect, I don't appreciate wasting people's time.
No, I completely understand. Like I said, I'm going to follow up. And if maybe those emails could be ressent, if you include me in there, so that way I can make sure that if it's not getting to the right person, that it gets there and that we can probably do some sort of reimbursement for the previous ones that weren't paid as well. So I'd like to rectify that if I can, so and.
Thank you.
So.
Welcome. Have a good day.
You too.
For our.
Excuse me?
We approve the Williamsville Road polls.
And we just reconsidered.
We just reconsidered the motion.
So we have to vote to reconsider it?
Well, the motion was made in seconds.
And but was never voted on.
Yes.
Because Katie, they did a second motion, and then you were all going to vote on both motions. Katie just recused herself for the first.
And withdrew my motion.
For the second, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
For the good of the order, you probably should vote on the matter at hand, which was to reconsider the Williamsville Road poll petition.
Yes, I think we should.
Okay, so it's been made in second to reconsider. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passed. We were all set on Ragged Hill.
Remember?
Can I, can I abstain?
Hi.
Yes, you can't vote on it.
Right.
You weren't here for the.
I was going to abstain.
You can't even abstain. You just don't get a vote.
Get nothing. Denied.
That's me.
Denied.
You, you're okay for the next issue, okay?
Hi, Cody.
Okay, so we're all set on that, so now we'll move to item eight. The tech and efficiency review from the UMass Collins Center. So Brianna, turn it over to you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm pulling it up.
Oh, great. I T. Support. Thank you. While we're pulling that up, and we can send this around to everybody, I'm not sure if you got a copy?
Absolutely. I just bought the presentation last night, so I will make sure to send them a copy.
Yeah.
They all have the final, or they all have the big version.
Oh, good, yeah.
So we are going to be talking about components of that final version, the memo that has the recommendations within it. So we will address that tonight. So for the sake of the public and the folks who are watching from home, my name is Brianna Sundred. I am joining you all tonight from the Collins Center at UMass Boston. And I have been working with the town of Hubbardson on several projects since the beginning, almost the beginning of two thousand and twenty-four. But tonight we are going to focus on one of two grants that the town received. And I guess we're referring to it as the technology and efficiency project. Although you'll see that it took, when we get to the recommendations, you'll see that it took many different shapes. So I'm going to go ahead and start, if you don't mind going to the next slide. It's a, um.
Can I get the faces on the way?
So I'll just, as we're getting the, the screen pulled together, why we're here, why we're even talking about this project, obviously originated with this group. Although, and I'm not sure if this is the same membership that set the F Y twenty-four polls.
We talked to you before?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
It's the same.
We don't have that on our computer?
Just, just.
I don't think that presentation. I just got it.
Yeah, Nate didn't get it until the weekend, so I don't think it made its way through. So here, we can share too. So the, the reason obviously why we're here is originated from the select board goal to increase the efficiency and effectiveness of town by supporting measures that review town processes, automate tasks, invest in new technology, and creating a culture of continuous improvement. So that was kind of the charge, our mission here. The town sought and received a community compact best practice grant to support this goal. And through that, the town retained the Collins Center, and our project team took conduct a review of the town's use of their current technology. Is it being used to the optimal, most efficient use? Is there any more room to get increased utility out of it? Are applications that you have, you know, no longer needed, et cetera? To better understand and determine where there might be room for improvement. So the grant was designed, obviously, by the folks at this table and the town administrator to build in implementation funds. I will talk a little bit about that when we go through the, oh, great, when we go through the recommendations at a glance. And all of the recommendations that we will talk about are expanded with more context within the memo that it was delivered in October of two thousand and twenty-four, so that has a little more deeper context in terms of.
Just what we have.
Yes.
Yeah, so you have, you'll see the, a familiar view in just a second of the recommendations table. And then in your memo, it kind of gives a little bit more context to each of the recommendations. Here, I know this is kind of small, but you know, this is another part of the memo you probably, if you have the memo up, it's really just us acknowledging and thanking everybody at this table, the town administrator, and his leadership team, as well as all the people that we interviewed as part of this process to kind of get that background information and understanding of how the key processes you use to drive your business operations. So I won't read everybody's name, but thank you to all of those great people. I know this is a little small for you all, but this is just kind of walking through the different phases of the project. We started off again in February of last year for that discovery and kickoff meeting. In March, we were onsite here starting interviews with some of the people who were at the table. Other staff members, former staff members. We spoke with your managed service provider. We spoke with your cable access contact. So just speaking to a wide variety of people. We then kind of moved into a background review and data collection, looking at standard operating procedures, working with, under, getting a better understanding of the system that everybody is using to drive their function. So from there, we, we did a little bit more of a in-depth audit. I was able to get access to some of the key business solutions that you're using and look at system settings and see where there could be improvements. So that pretty much took care of the, the spring and the summer, all gearing towards that fall time when we were working on our final project memo, which we'll talk about in just a second in terms of recommendations. And really ending the year off with use of that implementation funds that came with the grant, which I'm sure you have all seen or had to approve some of those acquisitions. And we'll talk a bit about how they fit into this grant, the next grant, and a potential third grant that the town is seeking. So if you don't mind, Nate, go into the next slide. Oh, so just a note on methods. Obviously, I just mentioned that we were interviewing key stakeholders. A lot was learned from that process, doing a deep dive and inventorying the systems that are used. Again, diving a little bit deeper into some of those systems and their functions, document management, legislative management, the website, H R, onboarding, payroll, online permitting. And so from there, we kind of moved into some theme areas and working more closely with, I guess, I would say that the product owner or the function owner, you know, sitting with, with Tricia and looking deeply at some of the Conservation Commission functions. And then just to note that the project we did originally designed it for some public focus groups, which we did spend time putting that together and marketing. I think that at that point in time, there wasn't a great interest. So what we were able to do was convert the hours that would have been spent on that to technical assistance that we kind of worked with the town on the tail end of the grant to provide some support during the vendor process. And this, you'll recognize, obviously, this is the cover of the memo that you all have a copy of. So really, this is just keying us up to talk about the recommendations in a little bit more depth, if you don't mind. Advancing to the next slide. So here, you'll see the priority areas based off of those interviews and audits. Some theme areas kind of emerged. And so the first one was the permitting and application in forms. The second area was legislative management. The third was customer service and request tracking. The fourth was just generally human resources and accounting processes. The fifth one, there are website enhancements, document management, and then at the tail end, just general recommendations. So if we could advance, we'll start to take a look. This will, it's very tiny. Hopefully, we can see, but I'll talk through them. So you recognize this summary table from what is in your memo. And what's different today is that we, I went through and tried to show what is already in progress and what has been complete and what's attached to either grant funds from this project, the second grant, and potentially the I T. Grant that if the town is successful, funds will go towards some of these requirement, recommendations, excuse me. So one thing I just want to point out is that I think Hubbardson is the fastest implementer of any recommendations that I've ever seen. You know, the, the memo went out, and some of the things were already in progress.
You have to, you have to bolster his self-esteem anymore.
I have to.
Ego at the end of the table, please?
I have to say, it is, it's unique. It's impressive what this, this team, what this leadership team and the town administrator have been able to do. So it's definitely a record for how quick some of these things were getting off the ground. So take, take that as you will, but I will say, as we go through this, you'll see that many of the recommendations are either in progress, completed, and potentially weaving into the, the next grant that we'll touch on briefly, and then a potential third grant. And at the end, I'll kind of show how those things fit together to kind of show you that landscape of how the town is benefiting for some of those grant funding opportunities. So this section, the first section, again, if you, if you can't see, you can follow along in your memo that you, that you do have. So the first section is permitting, applications in forms. And, and that, there was four key recommendations that came out of that kind of theme area. You'll see that we have a key here, priority impacted effort, to kind of give a sense whether something's high priority and whether or not it has a high impact and what effort it would take to kind of organize some of the things to start with in terms of planning your implementation. So for the permitting section.
What did you do?
Stop playing with it.
Yeah, that's okay. Well, hopefully, hopefully you can see. Hopefully you can see that. So the first recommendation in the permitting section, and I, I can go through these in greater detail if there's questions. You know, adding additional applications to the e-permitting portal, trying to create that one-stop shop for anything that a community member might be filling out or a contractor or customer might need to fill out. We recommended to audit and upgrade other applications in forms that might exist in various different forms and formats, P D S., paper copies, et cetera. And then just generally conducting a staff training on the e-permitting solution since there had been new staff who had come on board from when the permitting solution was created initially.
Just a quick question.
Absolutely.
What determined, or how did you arrive in terms of next stage to these priorities and impact and effort?
That's a great question. So based off of the, kind of the entirety of the scan and what we learned, trying to push some priorities higher in terms of this would have something you should start first. And then when we put that closer together with the impact, if it's also high and the effort's low, it's really to understand what goes into some of these in terms of staff capacity. So whether the effort's going to be high or not, medium or low, how much is going to be?
So these are yours conclusions?
Yes, yes, from how I see the system from, from afar.
And the grant was written as determining a way to increase efficiency for small rural staffs. So that's a lot of where our priority will come from, as well, it's way to create space, create bandwidth for a incredibly burdened staff with no room on their plates to see what can be handled.
Just, thank you.
And you may not see it here, but as we go down into the next section, the legislative management, obviously, that's going to be kind of the processes that drive your meetings, that drive the postings of the meetings, minutes, agendas. I spoke with Heather on the call.
She's on, she's on.
Oh, good. So Ms. Monroe was, was able to give me a lot of information and background about your legislative management process, as well as some key staff members. So we organized these recommendations under this category. Again, you'll see, well, you won't see, but there are lots happening in this category, mostly connected. mostly connected to the, the website, uh, the new website. So with that upgrade in your website, you're going to, that's why these are in progress. You're going to be getting, um, some enhancements to what your legislative management operations and capabilities are compared to your website currently. Uh, so the first two, we actually kind of attached grant funds to in hopes to reflect, um, if the IT grant that the town administrator submitted, which hopefully we find out in a few weeks, uh, being able to pay for that kind of second phase, um, of the, of the tech acquisition. So, um, let's see. Mm, it kind of continues onto the, the next page of legislative management, we had a fair bit of recommendations.
I can, you kidding? It's got the size of like, who space up, I can read that, no problem. I could read it before, but now I could super read it.
So one that probably this, um.
Actually can't see all this.
That I did pick up from speaking with folks, um, around this table, Ms. Young and Ms. Monroe, was training boards and committee members periodically on what the process is for legislative management. So you'll see that that's not in progress or complete yet, um, waiting for that legislative management tools that come along with your new website and then hopefully moving into that recommendation. Really that is what I heard from speaking with current, um, elected officials and committee chairs that we spoke to as part of the process. The next section, again, you'll see a lot of in-progress, the customer service and request tracking. Uh, one recommendation was to explore the adoption of a constituent relationship management tool. Um, again, that is in progress currently and part of the implementation funds, um, I'll have to check with Nate on this, but part of the implementation funds that came with the grant went to funding some of that first phase of the, the new technology.
Excuse me, what, what exactly is a CRM?
So a CRM is basically a system where, um, if you were reporting a pothole, you can put something in and it goes directly to a central repository. If you made a request to have, you know, a tree taken down. So it kind of brings together customer requests, information, um, so that it can live in a central place. So when Tricia's on vacation, someone else could see that, um, that request was made. If they call for an update, they'd be able to give the status of what their request was. So it's really a system to, to track and see, see requests through, um, to completion.
So it's, it's a request generated by the, by the voting public?
Yes.
So Chris, a lot of my heart in looking for a constituent relationship management tool was the fact that as staff members would turn over, different members of the community would take second, third and fourth shots at asking for something that they got a no for.
Yep.
So, and there was never a bad tool that had, oh, we spoke to Mr. Smith on August seventh of two thousand and eighteen about this. The answer was no, you just had to take everyone on their, on their word. Most of the people were, were very honest and didn't try to pull the wool over anyone's eyes, but for some it wasn't true. And it's also easier to do turnover when we can point to something.
It gives you trackability and it gives the public a, a generic way to get in and ask their questions to, to a general pool. And then once the, once the request is submitted, does it automatically get disseminated to the proper department? Or is there someone that has to field those requests and send them there?
That's the idea. And so, um, building out workflows that are specific to that request type, the potholes, who does it need to go to first? Does it, you know, go directly to, to DPW and what's the workflow that it follows? And so customizing that for those types of requests, so they go to the right people. And in most cases, when the issue is resolved, closing that case out, then the re- the resident or the person who submitted it gets some sort of validation that it's closed out, an email or something like that, to, to kind of close the, the loop of the request.
So the first version of this you're going to see is something that I've been affectionately calling Hub Fix. You can, these will all be tied together by that Hub Connect logo that I sent you. And what Hub Fix is already kind of programmed to do is base where it sends itself off of the selection. So if you pick pothole, it sends directly to Travis, I get CC on everything. The department head actually won't need to email the constituent address, there is more information needed. So it will say, thank you for reporting the pothole on Williamsville Road, we will be back to you. And then if Travis just simply clicks it done, the user will get an email saying, your submission has been completed. If he needs more, he go, obviously goes down that rabbit hole. He can go for speeding to Ryan, to general, I will get all of the general complaints, but that'll be the first, that'll be the first iteration of this that you'll see coming out. It is hoping, and we're hoping to be able to utilize that in other fashions later, but let's see how this goes. I promise Travis that there would be no social media application of this, because some towns, you can read, you can follow it live, like a pizza tracker. And, and it gets bad, that's all.
And I think, you know, building off of what Nate just said. Being able to have that data and that information over time, maybe you're going to identify a trend that, you know, not to beat up on Williamsville Road, but maybe they're having a problem where the potholes aren't getting filled in time or they're having so many potholes, maybe that is time to get resurfaced. So also, also a tool to get additional insight so that you can kind of course correct and make data-driven decisions.
So I might add a question, just from my own education based on both of you. Where it's, you said it, it sends it directly to the source that it needs to be sent to. Um, is there any, uh, follow-up on that in the sense of bad analogy here, but that it's not just left sitting in a basket and hasn't been gotten to? Does it also tell the peo- somebody else that, hey, they've never even looked at it yet?
The system has ticklers that will alert me to when.
Katie, Katie.
Well, that's a different source, totally.
Yeah.
So, but sorry to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the power automate system that runs the backend of this.
That was too easy, seriously. Anyway.
It, it's a pretty cool system that we're going to grow. You know when I jokingly said that Leanne has been programming and coding? It's because we have been programming and coding on some of this stuff, so.
She has.
Yeah.
I've, I'm very impressed with her work. Uh, well, the other thing too, it doesn't always have to originate, so if someone's not maybe comfortable submitting something online, um, it could take the path of taking a traditional phone call and the person, the call taker could put that information into. So if someone wants to call or email, it could still feed into the system. They don't have to be forced into using a specific type of technology.
And the goal would be to eventually eliminate bottlenecks and determine what needs more and or less funding in certain years. Because if we go back and the lion's share is potholes and speeding, we know where we need to put them.
You gotta put some in the pothole fund.
Yeah. Especially this year, geez.
And then, you know, just continuing in that cus- customer service or request tracking theme, um, again, you'll see progress on all of these, uh, recommendations here. Um, so consider installing kiosks, get kiosk or customer face, interface points. Um, I got to see the new site today, so thank you, Tricia, and just kind of envisioning what that might look like in the new space. Um, and that is also something that is being sought through the IT grant, actual technology devices to have those kiosks for people to come in, check the things that they need to check, submit a form, submit a request, uh, while still having the lovely in-person experience if they'd prefer to, to, to deal with, um, folks behind the desk. One thing that I, I would say that we spent a lot of time doing today, um, and blowing into that second, second grant, which I will at the end of this kind of show how things build together. But really looking at, uh, the business processes for the different departments, creating FAQs and online resource libraries for staff. One thing I heard was, you know, I really want to be helpful when, uh, when Nancy's not in, but I don't know what's, what form to give this individual or, um, another staff member's out and I'm covering for them. So what we're doing right now is really work around that, creating, um, with your new Microsoft three sixty-five environment, creating easy intranet online resources, so if someone had to hop from one function to the other, they'd be able to access some of those things. Uh, one thing that we'll plan to build into the system is feedback. So if someone is using the system, submitting, um, requests, following up with them occasionally to understand what the satisfaction rate is with the service, whether it's the tool itself or the pothole filling itself, um, getting, getting an opportunity to get some satisfaction rates.
Sorry, I was, oh, Katie. Sorry to go there.
All right, so Nate, yeah, thank you, if you don't mind. I don't spend too much time here, some of these things have been, um, complete. This is the human resources and accounting processes. Um, I know we don't have our, our treasurer here right now, but, um, something that was already complete before the, the ink was dry on this was the di- digitization of the human resources onboarding process. Um, and a couple of other things that are recommended that are in process right now are the time and attendance module, um, for payroll and the accruals function in the, in your municipal finance software. So those are in progress. And this one I think is really exciting. Um, I checked these off, uh, the website enhancements. We originally started, um, from just recommending Nate move from one version of the, the Civic Plus website to another one because it was going to be outdated, so we started there. Um, and it really moved into being able to get a much more comprehensive and useful website tool for, I would, I would need to look to Nate for the numbers, but for not a lot of additional funds. So they were having to make the migration anyways from one to the other and were able to secure, um, a really good deal to, to get an upgrade on the, on the website. Um, and so as part of the website enhancements, we're talking, um, these are all in progress, reviewing and pursuing the potential additional add-ons. Um, that will be achieved through the migration to the new advanced kind of middle tier tool that they, um, have acquired. And again, that is, the three, four and five are all connected to grant funds, um, or a blend of grant funds and town funds. And one thing that's in progress was training additional staff members on how to use the website content management tools, so it wasn't all falling on one individual, um, so that once the.
Is it changing a lot? To how to do the website?
The website is, it's completely.
Now I gotta relearn it and.
You're gonna, you're gonna love it, I think.
I'm just, yeah, I'm gonna love it. No, I'm not. Lies, all lies.
It's a lot, I mean, it is definitely a change, but I think with it beyond just kind of the static information, it gives a lot of dynamic tools that the town will be able to use, sending out notifications, people can subscribe to specific things. And then with the website enhancement is how we're getting those improvements, the legislative management process and tools, so. Um, so those are all in progress and.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah, of course.
Is there some sort of gatekeeping mechanism to, um, manage the website content? I mean, we don't want, you know, anybody who has access to it to put anything on the town website. We want that to funnel through some authorization type of.
Yeah.
So to, yeah.
There will actually be more gatekeeping and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Protection than there is right now later, because you can layer it so that, say, certain boards have to go to Mel, certain boards have to go to me, certain boards go to Patricia and we'll all just be able to look at things. Whereas right now, anyone with access can go and do it in a townwide news on whatever. I'm the one that does most of them, but sometimes I'm shocked by what's up there. So it'll be a little more pulled back. And Brianna got to witness firsthand a pretty lengthy ridiculous negotiation between me and the gentleman from Civic Plus. They talked him down by, I think I had one point asked for a forty-five percent discount. He just went, uh, uh, let me ask.
I was really impressed. I was really, that's why I said there was a good deal, I didn't know how to phrase that, but there was, it was a very good opportunity and the timing seemed really right and I was very impressed with the, with the deal. So, um, but to go to your question, um, permissions can be very granular. You can say, I only want, um, Tricia to have access to this one single page and she can't touch anything else all the way to, you, you can't send anything out, so you get a lot more permissions where you can lock things down.
Good.
Um, and so you'll, but you also can, there's reporting built in, so you have better analytics. You can understand that everybody's searching for the transfer station and so maybe you should need to put information out about the transfer station, so. All around, um, an upgrade for, for that piece.
Now people are going to think we have a transfer station.
Yeah.
We don't have one.
Nope, yes, that was a, a fictional example.
The, right now, and it was one of our goals at the beginning of the year, our forms are not only going to be brought to the internet and enhanced on a workflow base, but there are currently in different deep, deep ends of the site, different versions of different forms and different workflows and different versions of pay schedules. So this will ensure that there is only one story being told and it is the truth and it is correct. So that's going to be huge here too.
So people will be able to go on, on the new website and file for a building permitter?
Yep.
And not have to come in the office at all?
Yep.
Yep.
Excellent.
They can pay, unless they want to pay in cash or check, then they would have to come in, but you can pay via card. Eventually there will be Apple Pay on kiosks and it'll be.
Kiosks where?
We put in, I put in for a, we're getting there, we gotta let her, we gotta let her get to that part.
Okay, oh, all right, so.
It's all, all will be revealed.
I'm jumping ahead. I did read about kiosks.
Well, one other thing too with the, with the new website and getting forms that used to, used to be a PDF or a scanned copy online is there going to be a lot of improvements to ADA compliance, which is going to be a legal requirement for cities and towns and entities. Uh, well, at least it was, you know, last week. So, um, that is a date that we're tracking towards where cities and towns have to be compliant with their materials being accessible, uh, through the American, um, Disabilities Act. So that's another great thing about having, um, the upgrades that are in, in progress. Okay, so document management, here you'll see, um, there's some recommendations that are, are not in progress yet, including making some tweaks to the existing, um, portal that you have, the Laserfish portal might, some people might know it as, but the public document portal. Uh, so there's some recommendations there, again, uh, low effort ones, so, um, hopefully we can have some orange checkmarks, uh, soon. But some things that are in progress, uh, a document management plan, um, which includes a future forward strategy for newly created documents. And so, um, in the new system that, uh, is currently being built, you know, if someone submits a dog license application, they'll get created, a copy will be saved and we're working right now, or, or Nate is working right now with the vendor to make that happen automatically.
Admin training for that is on Thursday, because we're going to pretty much gut and start over with Laserfish because no one was trained on it. And it, we can't expect the staff to utilize it in a meaningful way if they don't know how to do it. But so Laserfish was a old grant product, project that started under Ryan, died for a little while. I picked it back up, finished it, but then there was just a gap in training, who knew how to do it, who didn't know how to do it. So we're just starting all over and so it should be fun.
Just to train everybody.
To train everybody so that they know to point people there. The people that know Laserfish is there, this was a incredibly forward-thinking move for the town to do and I, it was pushing a hundred thousand dollars, so it wasn't cheap. But Hubbardson has so much more online and available in the middle of the night for whomever. That whole packet that I sent you guys about the church was literally just church. A hundred and thirty-one pages of documents that would have taken a day and a half to find, so.
And it would probably more, day and a half to find because there are records everywhere. So, I mean, maps and stuff especially, they, some are in the vault, but some are in the historic society, some are here, some are there, some are everywhere. So the fact that we've had, Nancy and I have had more compliments on having Laserfish. Realtors love it, because we just point them in that direction, it makes their homework so much easier. Same thing with builders or people who want to buy, buy a home here in Hubbardston. You know, everything's there for them, the whole history of their house is there.
And so you'll see here with the integration, um, that's in process because the, the customer relationship management tool that we were just talking about, um, has a way to take the forms that are generated from that system and push them into the sys- the Laserfish document system without having to have a staff member print and scan and file. So, uh, building off of that, exploring what other integrations that you can have. So, uh, building off of that, exploring what other integrations that you can have with that Laserfish system from your other, uh, business tools.
So, I, I have a question if you, if I may, um, so if a business wants to renew their business, um,
Certificate?
Certificate, they can do it online and then, so when somebody does it online, does, where does it go from there? Who gets notified?
So for, I'll take the dog license as a, example because that's-
Yeah, well, the town clerk, yeah.
Yeah, the town clerk is doing that right now, so, um, it is online right now, when they click it, they fill it out. It goes to the correct people who need to approve it and work it through the steps.
Okay. Okay.
Um, so if it's multiple people, then it will go to those multiple people. If it's a workflow where it needs to go to fire first and then DPW and then to the fa- the final step, you can have it be as customized as that, or it could start with the person it needs to start to, they say yes, then it goes to fire, they say yes, then it goes to Nate and he says yes.
So.
And at the end it fills out the permit and ships into the-
And it, and it's same thing, um, one of the biggest problems in town was somebody that would wanna open a business, the, the, the things they had to go through and get done. So they'll be able, that'll be able to done, done on, be done online?
Yeah, it's my hope that by September we'll have that.
And it'll go, once somebody does their section, it'll go to the next person?
Mm-hmm, and then we can track.
And, and it might take a couple days instead of a couple years?
And if it takes a couple of days, we will know about it.
We'll know about it.
And we will be able to-
So everybody's getting timestamped and dated?
Yep, yeah, and then eventually it just deposits itself into Laserfish once we're done with it
Yeah, that's-
About quality control.
And the copy is sent out to whoever, so that, God forbid, we have to go back and look and say,
Okay.
they lost it or there's a question of, did they do everything that they were supposed to do, we can pull it right up out of Laserfish and there's no more paper files.
Okay.
Unless the law requires.
Unless the law requires it, obviously, but.
Asterisk, asterisk.
Right.
Uh, and the good thing too, let's say, let's follow the line of the business application, if, if the person reviewing it said, oh, they're missing one thing right there, they could send back to the applicant and say, please provide this.
So when they fill out the application for a business permit, do they pay online also?
Yep.
Unless they're paying cash or check.
And so we don't have to deal with checks or anything anymore, just-
Unless they would prefer to pay with cash or check, then they are gonna come in.
Now, how does that get processed? Is there a fee involved with the processing?
It's a fee, it's the same exact fee as Unipay. Mary and I were able to negotiate, the company forked down to exactly what we pay Unipay. It's, I believe, two percent on cards, ACHs are free, which is something that's been okay.
Mm-hmm.
The town doesn't pay that, it's a person supplying for the, okay, thank you.
Nope, the person pays, yeah.
Yeah.
Not that I need to know, but I just need to know.
Yeah. It's good to know, it's good to know the, the devil's in the details.
I'd love to know the inner workings of stuff.
Yeah.
And the goal is over the next year to get all of the workflows and forms to online. I don't want to overwhelm everybody and be like, here, now you do everything, all, and Katie said I wasn't allowed to touch her forms, so.
No, only, only the Hubbardston Fair ones, cause you have to go through those, cause you can't have duplicates.
Yeah.
Other than that, I don't care about that.
You gotta give up a little control.
That's why I said, the rest, I don't care, like the light fund, all that stuff can go online and be fine.
Every-
It's the Hubbardston Fair because I can't have two, uh, two more people, it's-
Control, it's all, no control.
No, you wanna go through it? Trust me, I don't wanna go through it sometimes, I get the mail and I'm like, oh, there's so many. But yeah, good, nah, I don't care, all the other stuff can go online.
Just playing.
And even people like, some of my slower digital implementers such as the DPW director are excited about this type of thing cause driveway permits are really annoying for him.
Yeah.
So he'll be able to do this.
He won't be happy when the pothole thing start rolling in. Are they going directly to him?
Depends what kind, well, I gotta sit down and figure all that out still.
So you should be able to go through and check off a box on,
Yep.
on whether it goes to you or him?
Yeah, and that's not the first thing coming out, the dog licenses are out now.
Yeah.
Building and pipe and pipe, building-
Electric.
Electric and gas will be out in two weeks and then we'll go from there.
Yeah. Is there like a hazard choice on there, like if there's a road hazard that nobody knows about?
And you can actually go in and select the area, like say you are reporting something at your neighbor's house. You find your house, go down the street, click it on a Google map, you can put in a picture, it's all pretty cool.
There's gonna be one for the dog officer too, cause she gets a lot of them on Facebook.
I'm, I'm gonna try to put it all in one application.
Street signs missing?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Don't go there.
Although I don't think the app can be faster than I responded to that woman about the street sign yesterday.
I'll tell you.
You're superhuman.
Three, three minutes.
Alright, so we can kinda scoop down to the, the last section, which is kind of a catch-all, other general recommendations.
You scrolled too fast, there you go.
Um, and again, I'll, I'll flag the, the piece that's in progress right now, which is the design and long-term training and ongoing support for staff on processes, use of systems, tech, uh, all the technologies that power town services. So you'll see when we move on to the next, uh, slide in just a minute, kind of explaining how, where we started with one grant, where it kind of flows into that second grant that you all got, and then where, what we hope to get out of this third grant that the town administrator submitted, um, a couple of weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
And how that's gonna fill the gaps, uh, with some of the things that are in progress. Um, so yeah, so we're working on this right now, the long-term, um, training and kind of a support using the Microsoft three sixty-five environment as kind of the host for all of that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I forgot to put, uh, this is, should be a check-off, but I, I missed it, but Nate, um, let me know the technology equipment replacement upgrade schedule is already in place.
Mm-hmm.
Um, selecting a single enterprise business application, big checkmark there because that is the, um, conversion over to Microsoft three sixty-five that started, what, three, a mon- last month?
Yeah.
Three weeks ago. Um, and then the last piece here, and I think maybe this came through my, my conversation, um, with, with several people, it came up about the facility management software solution. Uh, so we did put that in there, perhaps it's, there's some components of the customer relationship management tool that could maybe be used for reporting issues with facilities, we didn't really fully flesh that out yet. Maybe it's something, um, Nate is thinking about, but it is on there, um, to potentially think about one way or another, either with an existing tool or looking at a new tool. And s- any questions on the general pieces before we kinda move on to the next?
So, as far as facilities, facility, facility management, so that has obviously to do with the buildings, obviously, and-
It's a ticketing system.
It's a ticketing, yeah.
And so makes a ticket for whatever department needs that ticket. Okay, so if there's an issue, somebody can go in and log a ticket?
Yep, and then we can track it on the backend.
And it's timestamped?
It's likely something we'll be able to do through here.
Whether it's, and then- When the issue's completed?
Yep.
Do they have to go in and like make a completed timestamp?
Click the button. Click the button.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
And that's been the whole kind of point in where this gets a little sexier because the, the centralized ticklers-
Excuse me?
What is wrong with you tonight?
His head's got swollen tight, so.
It's-
No, it did not.
It's late and it was a day.
It did not, but, uh-
Go ahead with your statement.
I don't even know what I was saying now.
You were talking about being sexy.
Not, no, no, the, the, we're going to be able to utilize this solution to have state different applications that we wouldn't be able to afford as standalone apps. Like we wouldn't be able to buy a C-click Fix program and a ticketing system and this and that, but by putting all these together and the great help of Brianna over the last year and a half, we're gonna be able to do some things that rural communities don't usually get to do.
So.
And that is kind of sexy.
To follow up on my question, so-
Don't get thoughtful.
In this software, um, you say facilities, but you know, facility includes all our vehicles too. So you'll be able to, let's say we buy a new piece of fire equipment, you can send it down the road twenty years, say replace it in the same management tool?
Possibly, that's not something we have looked at right now, but that is-
But we have a lot of vehicles that should be tracked.
Yeah, and that is something that would likely come up because it's a whole different conversation that we're having. So I could see those two coming together.
Well, yeah, but it's part of facilities, isn't it?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, just curious.
We will have a much more robust inventory and schedule as a result of our meeting a couple weeks ago.
I mean, cities, the bigger towns, you know, they have a hundred pieces of dump, a hundred dump trucks, whatever, they must have some tracking tool that keeps track of everything.
They make tools and you can buy them as standalone applications. I haven't had the privilege of utilizing one or being in it to understand, but that's,
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not saying we can't replicate something like that, I just don't know what that would take at this time.
Okay, alright, thank you. No more questions?
Good questions.
Fine.
Alright, so I think if you don't mind going to the next slide Nate, we're just kinda, uh, try to pull this all together and I'll go through this, I don't expect anyone to be able to see that. Uh, and just reiterating the leveraging of the state grants that kinda got the town to where, where they are today, so that, again, that first community compact grant is where we were able to do a lot of discovery, talking with staff members, looking under the hood at some of the existing systems. And we just went through, um, what, what I really envisioning, we're, we're calling actionable and realistically implementable recommendations. Um, and you could see already, again, uh, before the ink was dry, many of them are in progress or completed, uh, under the guidance of the town administrator and his, his team, so. Uh, that again gave a little bit, that first grant gave a little bit of funds to cover some of those initial costs, uh, as well as a little bit of technical assistance. Um, so you'll see, um, perhaps we were calling it phase one of the project, so that partly funded phase one um, of, of some of the new software acquisitions, uh, this-
Okay Brianna, a lot of our ability to do that and the kind of walking through the door and saying, I want implementation funds directly came from this select board, it has not changed with, because we had received in the past these community compact grants that resulted in a binder on a shelf collecting dust. And that came up when I had first gotten hired here and went to apply for this, so certain members of the board, if not the whole board, said, hey, you can do this, but just make sure it's not just a report. So this all was really kicked off by a priority of the select board and that's awesome.
Yeah, and, and it made its way into the second grant as well, obviously, and I will say, it's something that I've started to, when I'm speaking with potential clients in cities and towns, recommending that model to leave some bit of money on the backend of the grant, either for technical assistance, to come in and start fixing some of the rec- things on the recommendations or set aside to, to purchase something or training, and so, um, I think it's a great model. I think it's really wise to, to have that as part of the process, and so we're seeing that not only in this grant, but then the second community compact grant, um, that was focusing on continuity of operations and initially we were looking at it through the lens of professional development, but as the landscape shifted and changed, uh, we were able to kind of refocus that second grant on documenting key department functions, uh, creating those digital knowledge bases in the Microsoft system, which you talked a little bit about, AKA like the Intranet for, uh, resource for staff. Uh, so we're in the throes of that right now, uh, doing some discovery so that we can design, uh, that system that's most beneficial for staff, so I spent most of the day today speaking with different, um, departments about what their needs were, uh, what training needs they might have with the new system and what would be most helpful to design, um, the Microsoft environment for them going forward. Not only for their own ease of use, but if someone were to step into their role, uh, whether it was onboarding a new person or a new assistant or an intern, they'd be able to see everything that that position needs to do, uh, to carry out the functions of that office. So, um, again, that grant contains implementation funds, which are not decided yet on what those would be, but it also, um, is coming with the technical assistance because of that pivot we made. Uh, and that kinda leads us into the application that was submitted, uh, last month by the town for the community compact IT grant, uh, pretty substantial amount of, uh, money that was requested to phase, uh, to fund the phase two of the technology upgrades, the rest of the website enhancement and all the things that came along with that. Uh, building out the customer service system fully and then that also includes the kiosks and meeting room equipment for your new space.
Should we get this grant, twenty thousand dollars in special town meeting funds will be returned to the coffers. Cause this was, I, as I outlined at the special town meeting, we were going for this grant, we needed the, the approval of the money to be able to do the, to do it and sign up, but it was the hope to not have to utilize that, and that is still the hope.
Do we know when we'll hear?
Two weeks?
Okay.
It, the, it closes on February sixth.
Okay.
And we applied.
This week?
This is, yeah.
Nate was the first application, I'm pretty sure. Um, and, and I think too, learning and building off of the previous grants in the grant application, um, the town administrator included implementation assistance hours as part of the request, both from the vendor to make sure they're fully, uh, completing everything that they need to as part of their scope. Uh, sometimes that turns out to be more than we originally thought, so having some wiggle room in there for vendor assistance as well as implementation assistance, um, from, from my team, especially around the, the website and getting all of the customer service, uh, request system built, built out and the workflows built out, so. It's a, it's a big grant and it's weaving together, you know, technology, uh, software, person hours, so hopefully that grant comes through, um, and that's really how we see kind of closing the loop on some of the projects. Well, not closing, but connecting, uh, the loop on some of the projects that were made possible by the previous two grants.
So who, who is the vendor that we, that's gonna handle all the stuff when there's an issue?
That's, there's three vendors.
Three.
That was, it's the, that's what I was talking about with the connection, it's the Civic Plus who does the website
Yeah.
and the optimization software of the forms.
Yeah.
The Microsoft three sixty-five is going to pretty much be our home base.
Okay.
That's gonna be the user interface on the front of it.
Yeah.
And it also has something called Power Automate on the backend, which, do you know what Zapier is?
The what?
No, no, alright, so-
He's a quarterback, right?
Yeah, yeah, so, so Power Automate creates workflows so that when something is triggered, not tickled, but triggered, and it can go and do a series of other steps. That's what's setting off these personalized emails, that's what's filling out these PDF forms, it's a, a backend workflow automation tool.
So, is something, I'm just looking forward, so something happens, something crashes, you go to Microsoft first and let them figure it out or?
It depends on what part crashed.
Okay.
So if the website crashes and the-
So you go to that side, obviously.
You go to Civic Optimized, if Microsoft crashes, then yeah, we're going to Microsoft or we're going to CM Geeks, our IT department,
Yeah.
Alright.
Cause maybe it was the network that crashed, um, so.
And Paul has the keys to all of this.
Yes, Paul has the keys to all of this and will be helping us steadily.
Okay, so, next thing is, I mean, I guess I'm going way above where I need to go, but I'm going anyways.
Okay, let's go.
So, um, everything, does everything go to a cloud as people are typing and, and somebody puts in and then something crashes? Is everything in a stored in a cloud, cloud, like back in the day, everybody had to do a backup for all the computer work cause they had, cause that's all they had, well now they have cl- is, do you-
So just like everything else here, it's dual backed up. So it will be backed up to the cloud and then our CM Geeks makes us back everything up to this.
And the security is top notch for this stuff, cause
Yep, yep. Yep.
Lot of stuff going on.
They just, they just did all that over at forty-eight today, actually.
Yeah. Yes, and Civic Plus going down would be of national proportions, is that, yeah, thousands and thousands of municipalities.
Really?
Yeah.
Nothing the EMP wouldn't take care of, so.
Um, when they had us looking at websites, I looked at thirty-six town websites from everywhere between here in United, uh, from here up north to Florida to California to Michigan.
Yeah. And she's like, I like this North Dakota one, and I'm like, what are you talking about?
Yeah, so, I mean Civic, Civic Plus handles town-
The whole, the whole country?
It, yeah.
Really? Excellent.
Like that would be a home call to Washington.
Excellent, well, that's good to know, because.
And, and being in the cloud too and having kind of-
I mean, they must be good at it.
Built-in support, um, system, so I, I'm not sure what it says exactly in the contract, but have, uh,
Yeah.
twenty-four seven support, you know, if the website is down, they're gonna be letting you know and working on it. If the website is down, like Nate said, it's usually, uh, something that's impacting hundreds or thousands of people on whatever that server is.
Mm-hmm. Right, okay.
And I ensured with this contract, after having to pay OpenGov for our own data back,
Yeah.
that if we determine that we do not want to move forward after the initial or even subsequential contracts, we get our data for free, in, in a way that is easily downloaded by us to utilize again.
Yeah.
Dang it, man.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so that kind of moves all those things together and I know Nate, you've been kind of
Yeah.
adding to my thoughts along the- Adding to my thoughts along the way, but wanted to see if you want to talk a little bit about the bigger vision, next steps.
Yeah. I talked a bunch, so I pretty much said everything I was going to, but I can't thank Brianna enough for her partnership already. At a certain point in this, it became less you guys and more we. Like there are a number of times where Brianna's like, oh, we should do this, and like, oh yeah, you can work here, I can't afford you, but you can work here. And her skill set is phenomenal and it's just been great to get to work with somebody as passionate about the field she works in. So it'll be great, I hope we get to work together again and if not, you're not losing us anyway, so we'll drag you in.
I'm sure you two are geeking out, I'll come to sideways.
Well, the feeling is mutual, I will say that the town is really lucky to have a supportive board and also a team led by Nate. We're ready to pop in and do.
He doesn't need any more swelling.
Yeah, please, yeah, there you go, did that.
Yeah. The team though, the team has been, you know, hitting the ground running, so I appreciate that. It's a good thing for business, it's a good thing for the town.
And everybody has been working out of their comfort zone. There is not one thing that's not changing right now and our crew is handling it very, very well. Everyone is all hands on deck, it's.
I'm learning how to design a website.
Yeah, it's pretty refreshing.
Well, thank you.
But ADA requires help.
Thank you very much, it was very informative.
Thank you very much.
Any any questions, anything else come up?
No question, no.
Okay, you had a lot of good questions though, thank you, I appreciate that.
Peter always has good questions.
Okay, Peter. Alright, well, I'll let you get on to the rest of your business.
Thank you so much, drive safe.
Yes, I will.
Be careful.
I'm out back in Amherst, so hopefully the roads are clear.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. Everything was melting today, it's.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I asked my dad what it's like in Hadley, he says it's pretty clear.
Let me know what works for you in the next couple of days to connect on all this, sorry, I didn't get to.
That's okay, we didn't get a debrief, but I have the notes working and I'll get on your calendar. Thanks so much, Tricia, for everything.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on. First of all, anyone here for open session? Need to see you come in, Mike.
Mike, can I?
All of Mike.
No, okay.
Good to see you, thank you. Alright, um we have a consent agenda, let me go over with you folks so that we can ask, let's bring a hold for unanimous consent. Um acceptance of the minutes of January twenty-first uh to twenty twenty-five. Uh we were all present for that. Um under administrative matters. We have the uh.
Grant easement.
Grant of easement to Seven Main Street. That is basically so that they can get power to the library.
Three-phase power.
It's three-phase electricity to the library to power the heat pump project that was grant funded.
Got it. Yes.
Okay, uh tax map maintenance renewal, uh cartographic associates.
Telling teeth.
And then we have appointment, uh Travis Brown is a tree warden, physician alternate, no rate, by six thirty twenty twenty-five, do you wanna?
Long story short here, our tree warden works for National Grid. So at certain times, he's not going to be able to make certain choices that impact the town or have a conflict.
Conflict.
So by having Travis as an alternate, he stops National Grid from having to go through what would be tedious processes for very much dead trees. Like National Grid almost pulled out of a situation right now and said, alright, just let the trees be dead, we won't cut them down. If so, this will allow us to move forward quickly in certain situations.
And also uh we have some wage authorizations for Mary LaRue, finance treasurer collector, rate of thirty-eight eighteen. And Travis Brown DPW director, rate forty-four forty-eight. These are all on the consent agenda, if there are any questions, a hold, if they're if they're not, I would ask for unanimous consent.
Question?
Yes.
Um what percentage did you, these, what did they get for a percentage?
It was two steps and they.
So they got two steps?
Yeah, I think it was three point seven at the end of the day. But it's well well deserved within their budget.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm just curious, cause I tried to do the percentage and I came up right around there.
Yeah.
Just wanted to know what.
Yeah, it's exactly two steps and it's within the parameters of their own budget due to staffing switches during the year.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm just questioning what the percentage was, I don't care what you did, I do, but I don't.
I had a question about the tax map maintenance, is that something that we have to do? Is this a like a like is it due or something?
Yes, so our tax mapping system, the RGIS.
Okay. Yeah.
It is up, we need a contract every couple of years.
Okay.
I reached out to RRG and he pretty much said, you guys would be foolish to let that go, it's a good system, you have a good place.
Yes. Thanks. Okay, alright, so this is the same thing, we're just updating it.
It's we're reacting.
Pre-upping our contract.
Okay, alright. Just making sure that that's what I was looking at.
And the town likely would not be able to afford a significant jump above what we have.
Mm-hmm.
Like, yeah, we would love to have X, Y, and Z, but we're lucky to have what we have now.
Yes, we have paid bill, okay, that was my question.
Anything else? Not, could I have a vote, a a motion to approve the consent agenda is presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed, I'm sorry, someone else, opposed, abstained, have we lost, is Heather still with us?
Heather's still there, I saw her holding Noel up.
Okay. Heather, you're with us? Okay.
Yes.
Alright. Alright, moving on.
Sorry, I had a screaming child for a moment, so I could see you all, I just had no clue what you were saying and I was like, I'm waiting for the vote on the consent.
Okay. Thank, alright, so we'll move on to the uh business aspect. We have the uh Hubbardston Fire Union contract twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight, would you like to speak to that?
Uh so I would like to thank the Fire Union mostly, Taylor Wilkinson, who is the union steward slash president of the three-member union at this time. And for the last about two months, Taylor and I were negotiating back and forth with her main priority being to create a more competitive wage scale for the firefighters, both existing and incoming or future. And one of my main objectives was to A, have a neutral budget moving forward and remove some of the liabilities. Just this past year, due to leaving to take a job with another community, we had an almost twenty thousand dollar bill out of out of the blue. If all three sitting firefighters decided to leave in one year, it would be something to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars. So by removing the lion's share of liability for the town to pay out sick leave for anything other than retirement. We really tone in our liabilities to what is actually a payment for service and not just something that may occur. That was the main function of a lot of the changes, other than that is clerical cleanups and some really internal staffing things. But it is a fair contract, it is budget neutral and it brings us leaps and bounds into line with many of the communities that are in our region or in our population gap.
And everybody's on board.
Everybody's on board.
Yep.
Any any other questions or discussion on that aspect? If not, could we have a motion to approve and sign the Hubbardston Fire Union contract for twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight?
There's no percentage across the board for.
I was gonna ask percentage, I was gonna ask something else, but I'll ask it a different time.
One point five.
No, I'm gonna ask it a different time.
Oh, okay.
Something else.
I'm still waiting and then going to the motions.
Oh, so moved, sorry.
Is that, can we have a second?
So.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, motion is made in second, is there, you have questions or further discussion?
I'm gonna delay it to a table.
Okay, any other uh comments or discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye, yes.
Aye.
Abstained. Motion passed. Next, we have special municipal employee designation, Hunter Young. Again, you wanna interest that?
Yeah, so one of the requirements, I didn't know which order to put this in, the appointment and then the special municipal employee. But I guess if for some reason you said no to the special municipal employee, we couldn't then ratify the appointment. So one of the qua laws for the conflict of interest is if you serve one municipality in two ways, that you need to be designated a special municipal a special municipal employee by the select board or city council. Mr. Young serves as an elected member of the Finance Committee and Parks Commission. And he was also the chosen applicant for the upcoming custodian uh facilities and maintenance position. So with that, he had to put in a form that is right over here, if you'd like to read it. It pretty much says that much, that he is a non-compensated elected member of the Finance Committee and Parks Commission who is seeking to accept a part-time job with the same municipality. As long as it is signed by myself, chef, and filed with the town clerk's office, it is all legal beagle. And Hunter has, he still needs to sign it, but I filled out the form.
Any questions or further discussion on that? Okay, we have to take these separate.
Heather, you're muted.
Heather, you have something?
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Tricia.
No problem.
Um, to just just a quick question, so just to be clear Nate, we're not amending our special designation employee list for different positions? We're just simply accepting his specific conflict of interest form?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, no other questions?
Alright, alright, then could we have in terms of this part of it, uh motion to designate Hunter Young as a special municipal employee?
So moved.
So moved.
Could we have a second?
Second.
And seconded, uh any further discussions, seeing none, uh all in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstained?
Me.
One, okay, the vote is passed four to one. And then we go to item C concerning the same thing, facilities and maintenance custodian appointment now. So could we have a motion to appoint Hunter Young as the facilities and maintenance custodian at a rate of seventeen dollars per hour for nineteen hours per week with a term expiring June thirty twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Could we have a sec?
So moved.
And could we have a second?
Can we have discussion?
Once we get the motion on the table, yeah. Could we have a second?
Uh, second.
Alright, motion's been made in second, any questions or discussion, go ahead.
Um, what is this position, is this a secondary position or?
No, so Jim is leaving us, his resignation was accepted at the last meeting and the position was increased and it was going to be increased for Jim as well because we acquired forty-eight Gardner Road. And the monies that were left in both somewhat from possibly the income and mostly from the fire department rent money will offset any of this, or there will be no increase in the actual line.
How many, how many hours did Jim mark?
Twelve.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed, abstained?
Me.
Motion's passed four to one.
The current working schedule I worked on the other day is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, seven to noon. Thursday in the afternoon slash early evening because the senior center floors need to be cleaned when no one is there.
And I gave him all the hours for when people are actually physically in the buildings, like it didn't make sense to clean the library before story time. It makes more sense to clean the library after story time, so.
So he's doing all three, gonna be doing all three buildings?
In the DPW.
One, two, three, four, DPW.
That's enough hours to do all three buildings?
Sure.
Four.
Four buildings.
Four buildings.
This is more facilities.
Four, one, two, three, I see three buildings, what's the four?
DPW.
DPW.
Oh, really? What's he doing down there?
The bathrooms and the.
Bathroom, sweep up.
They can't do the room?
Part of the job, just.
No, not in the contract. Right.
And the little, the little break room area, they like a diamond stuff.
Oh, so so they need a janitor?
It's not every building every day, obviously.
Three people in that department.
Well, yeah, they don't have time to do it now, they can't fill.
And and this was also.
Really?
This was also a way for me to take a step forward with the facilities maintenance as well. That was both a priority and something that comes up quite often. This is more facilities maintenance than we've ever had. Like there, we've had a series of custodians that out of the kindness of their heart would tell the town administrator or whomever what was going on. But it was by no means part of their job responsibilities. It is Hunter's duty to, if he sees a loose knob, fix the knob. Like obviously, we're still gonna hire vendors for the big things, but he's assured me that he can do very minor plumbing, a patch job and a doorknob fix.
You know, or seeing something that might potentially down the road become a bigger project that we're reactive to instead of knowing well in advance, like the gutters over here.
Well.
You gotta rain, you gotta shower every time you walk down from today.
When we get that facilities management thing online, you can just log a ticket and you can truck it.
Yeah.
Yeah, he can send us a ticket and we can be like, great, here we go.
We've professionalized the position by ordering him some shirts as well, so he will, you will, you will know.
It was his idea, I gotta give him props.
So can we, let's move on then.
Hunter likes to uniform.
Thank you.
Item D legislative and budget priorities, this is simply authorizing the TA to send a formal letter to the legislate delegation outlining Hubbardston's priorities for funding infrastructure projects and policy support. Would you like to say anything more on that?
We talk about this all the time, you know, it's schools, pilot funding.
Boiler.
There's boiler, there's a second boiler on there, it's a pretty lofty list, but if there's one thing I learned working in the legislature myself is that the squeaky wheel does indeed get the grease. And it was the towns that put in these type of letters, a lot of facilities do it now because it was proven to work. But when a certain funding comes up and you don't know what to bring up, you remember, oh, what, that town sent me a letter. And suddenly there's something being funded off of it.
Yeah.
Quite a list.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I resonate.
I've read it too, so um could we have a motion?
So moved.
As for it, motion, is there a second?
Negative.
Okay, any further, any further discussion on that?
Negative.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, opposed?
Yes.
Aye.
Motion passed, excuse me. Okay, these next items, we don't need to vote on, it's just to indicate in the town report, if you had a chance to look at it. The select board section, uh basically it's a statement of what the town and ourselves and Nate and so forth have accomplished this past year. Uh the dedication to Paul Hale.
Aye.
And uh photo cover contest from.
Help me pick. Help me pick a photo.
From, there weren't that many, right?
No, there were actually quite a few, I picked the top three that everybody in the town office agreed that were the top three.
Oh. Mm-hmm.
Um so there is a adorable baby porcupine, an adorable baby raccoon, which I will not tell you which one is my favorite, but um.
Raccoon is cute, like the.
So what are we picking it for?
Um, it's for the cover of the annual town report and there is the, um, I think that's a gold, that's a finch of some sort.
I love the raccoon photo.
I do too, I like him peeking out behind uh.
That's the tree.
It's true, yeah.
Yeah.
The tree, um.
Yeah, that's the raccoon one, it's cute.
Yeah, cool. Where to find these?
Um, they were, um, so the gentleman who came to um the Citizens Academy.
Yeah.
Is a photographer and he submitted actually all three of those.
Yeah.
I like that.
And this is the second year of our annual town photo cover contest?
And a lot of these photos from the photo contest will actually make their way onto the new town website.
So, but the bird is probably eating a non-such bud.
No.
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 That's an apple tree.
Um, raccoons looking for snacks.
At least the raccoon's not in a garbage place, okay, so.
Yeah, the guy's like, I'm saying.
I I like the.
This is what they, this is what they look like in their native habitat.
So I like the raccoon.
I like the, I like the raccoon.
I'm fine with the raccoon, they're all like, they're all little cute pictures.
You getting a feeling one way or the other on this, Heather?
That's fine.
Chris?
You like the raccoon?
You like raccoon?
That's four for the raccoon.
It reminds me of my kids.
Okay.
So I guess we'll go with the uh in all of the raccoon.
So I guess we'll go with the, uh, the raccoon, okay?
In all of, yeah, all of the photos with proper recognition to their photographer will be placed on, on a page in the report, cause the chosen photo will be the cover.
Okay, uh, we don't have any old business, the TA report, we don't have one.
Uh, I can give a little bit of an update.
Okay, go ahead.
We attended the Mass Municipal Association Connect Three Fifty-One Conference last week. Uh, there was a great amount of training and networking, and the four of us driving down really got to get to know each other a little bit on an outside of work basis, so that was very positive as well, we all had a great time, Patricia's gonna try to win an award with her town report, so. So that was good, we got to take a photo and see Heather for a little while, and she was there
You might need to go down.
in her capacity as Paxton Town Administrator, it was overall a great day. On a not-so-positive note, which is coming up soon, we did lose another member of our DPW staff.
How long was he on the DPW?
Three months maybe, and this is unfortunately something that is going to have to come up
He was my first hire, so.
despite a change in their wages recently.
They still complaining about money?
That's how we lost everybody, yeah.
But, we may need to, this one was particularly a concern with the winter operations. Cause when, when a town has multiple people, they can kind of rotate. When there are four guys working and you get hit with back-to-back snow, that's tough.
That's heaven.
Yeah.
For me.
Yeah, but, so, don't be surprised if in the next couple of weeks you see myself and Travis coming to you with some sort of.
I do, I'm in it. Well, keep that pen out for the special municipal employee designation, cause they obviously need my help.
You should talk to them.
They don't pay enough.
Thank you. Uh, the town offices will be moving to the temporary town offices on twenty.
February twenty-first, the town office will be closed on February twentieth, that Thursday,
February twenty-first.
to allow town employees to empty filing cabinets, cause they obviously cannot be moved full, that kind of thing, packing, unplugging computers so that, um, the computers and everything, the small stuff will be moved over first. Paul from CM Geeks will be there on the twenty-first at ten AM over at forty-eight Gardner Road to start plugging in computers and making sure everything is up and working, so that Monday turnkey, we walk into the office and it's resumed business as usual, um, I know there're gonna be a hiccup, so please be patient. Um, the mail has already, ticket been put in with the post office for mail forwarding as well as the mailbox at the end of the road, the post office will be moving down to forty-eight Gardner Road at its new home.
Who moves that, the post office?
The post office moves it, I will be ordering, um, post boxes for the businesses that are staying here, so there will be no disruption in mail for the police, the COA, and the library. DPW's doing mail forwarding down to the DPW, it doesn't make sense for them to come up all the way to forty-eight Gardner Road to get their mail. Um, other things is, um, everything is painted, the counter is done, um, so, uh, thanks to, um, Lou Gagney for building a beautiful counter. Paul Sweeney, Linda Breeze Boys, and Joyce Green for putting in the hours to paint and, um, make sure that everything looks beautiful, clear, crisp, and fresh.
There gonna be any kind of a ceremony, kind of, since phase, cause it is phase one.
I think we didn't cut.
In the spring, when, every, and so, phase one will be complete, cause you know, we still have parts of the building
Right.
that needs to be sited, soft, it needs to be put on.
I'm talking about in terms of you guys actually being, going through that door.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a, we're gonna have an open house when it's warmer.
When it's warmer.
February twenty-first is an awful day to have an open house, so we'll, we'll have a nice little thing.
Yeah.
I've already told a couple of people that we're gonna do something in the spring to get the residents into the building that is their building, so that they can see what it's being utilized as, they can see that we took it very seriously and utilized it quickly, they can see, hopefully by then we'll have some drawings of something that the Rubenoff Architectural Firm will have in plans at that time. I'm hoping by that time we'll have more movement on getting the cable operations out of the police department and over into a more proper meeting room over there, so it is my hope that in a warmer month, maybe May, we have a nice evening over there where we allow people to see the fruits of their labor.
Yep.
Two questions, obviously.
Yes.
Um, so, if you're moving over there, you need to put a sign out front?
Yep, the prison, uh, system is coming.
I've already, we've, I've already asked him that, so.
Excellent.
The prison system is already coming, um, I just have to get him exactly what I want, he's gonna get me a quote probably next day,
Just some materials.
and then he delivers the signs to me.
Yeah, I'll be nice to put that.
But that's my, that is tomorrow project, my day when the little side is, so.
And, second part of that question is, um, the money for the move comes from the budget of that building?
The money for the move comes from the rental income over at that building, yes, it was eighteen hundred dollars.
Oh, that's it?
That's it.
Oh, that's cheap.
Yeah, when they, they sent me the quote, uh, we were guessing back and forth how much, and we did not get anywhere near that amount.
Okay.
It was pleasant surprise.
That's, no, I, I'm shocked.
Anything else on the TA?
Sorry, I took a bit of moving stuff.
It is okay, you've done a wonderful job of moving stuff.
Yeah, trust me, take all of that stuff off.
Okay.
Like.
Come out with like, take all of the.
What else could we have over there? We put a door on the utility room because National Grid is a nightmare,
Exciting.
and they kept shutting off power to different, to different parts of the building, so.
Why?
Cause it's a nightmare.
Why would they turn it, who invited them to the party?
No one.
No, no, they invited themselves.
Oh.
What do you mean?
I don't, I don't know, why would they come and turn it off?
So when we took over the building, we were slowly taking over all the National Grid accounts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, oh, and they were shutting off electricity?
So. They were shutting off electricity to accounts that they deemed that we hadn't taken over, but I was able to pull my call records and say, and Nate was actually in my office when I called them several times
Yeah.
They can't do that, you know, a pointer, cause it's.
this is our account now, please give me your account information so that I can pay the bills.
Yeah, well.
Call Nate on the thing, put it on the thing.
Okay, anything else?
They can't, they can't do that.
Uh, we're working on many, many grants, you'll see the MVP grants we're prioritizing right now, the Safe Streets, Safe Roots to School Grant we're working on, the Community Compact, and Community One-Stop Grants are, are open. Patricia and I met with Capital Strategic Solutions this morning, that company that is writing the grant prioritization plan for us. We are going to be putting together a prioritization schedule, I hope it will have stickers and those on-the-wall priority pads, so that should be fun, anticipate that in the next couple of weeks. Uh, the Senior Center Director is on her annual trip to Florida, so Nancy and Mel are over there running a very tight ship. The offices over here will be locked until Claudia's return, the Senior Center will be able to utilize this additional space, but the director has asked that we hold off for her to allow anyone to move into any offices, which I respectfully agreed to.
Okay.
We have been, tomorrow is the final day of annual reviews, everyone is doing quite wonderfully, and it, morale is up, there's a whole bunch of new, and a lot of it comes, and I've told you this before, from the positivity of the select board and just setting a positive vibe and a good foot forward, cause all are really good at that, and it trickles down, so thank you very much, and I appreciate working with you, and this was good night.
And I'm assuming everybody understands that we, we, the board, will still be working out of this area for, for the time.
For now, for meetings.
Even.
For meetings, but y'all will have a desk over at forty-eight Gardner Road, upstairs where Nate and I are.
Are they aware of that, over there?
Yes.
Yes, they're, they're, well, aware that public meetings are still happening here, cause we don't have the meetings.
This, this table, this table's staying here.
Four tables.
We have to make a concession, and we're going to be using a paper calendar.
That hurts, it's a nice table.
Well, Steve offered to build us a brand-new one, so.
What, uh, what about the pews?
Pews are staying here.
I thought they didn't want them.
They don't want them either, but.
Okay. Alright, uh, there are no policies to review. Under Matt, it's not recently anticipated, we have one, uh, this is a resignation of the DPW driver Zach McBride, effective February first, twenty twenty-five, so if we could have a motion to accept the resignation effective February first, twenty twenty-five, I appreciate it, so moved, we have a motion, could I have a second?
Negative.
Thank you, any questions or discussion on that?
How many are we down to with the DPW?
We're down to three people.
Three people, so that's the mechanic, Travis, and one?
Travis.
And one other guy, we're very fortunate that we have the firefighter that works for DCR in the summertime
Yeah.
Yeah.
and doesn't work in the winter, so he does, Brian, he plows over there.
Plowing.
And so does Paul, Paul.
And Travis is doing plowing now too.
We have a couple part-time guys.
We have a part-time.
Need to get out and fill out an application.
Did we, um, do we do an exit interview with the DPW workers when they leave?
We do when they were here long enough to establish sentiment.
He didn't come off probation, did he?
Yeah, none, none of the recent guys have been really long-term in any means. And this, this gentleman did express, both in his letter and to Travis when he went in to leave, that a lot of it was about timing in winter operations versus pay, but mostly about winter operations.
Okay, I think we gotta do a deep dive into that, cause there's something, there's something, I don't understand why we can't keep DPW workers.
Well, they're not at twenty-three dollars a hour.
I agree that it needs to be explored, but we are by no means alone, it's every, it's everywhere.
We're not paying as much as the other companies?
You know, back in the day.
We have a motion made in second, could we finish up on that, unless it's a specific pertaining to him?
Oh, sorry.
No.
Alright, if not, could we, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion to adjourn?
No, we'll press.
No, I have more matters to, I have more matters to discuss if I could.
How many more?
Just negative four, so.
Now, they've had a long day, and we've been here since five, so.
I've had a long day also?
I know, so I'm trying to just.
We're doing the public bidding here. The flag up at Curtis Rec Field, the United States flag is missing, it doesn't fit.
Yes, it was delivered, delivered to me, it wrapped, we folded it up per, you know, the requirements, and it is now in the box,
And it is.
again, in order to the prison to get a new flag.
You don't have to do that, cause the Lions put flags up there.
Okay.
Um, do you know if the rope is still up there?
The rope is, uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure, because I will be talking to Travis this week about putting a new cleat on that pole, so we can bring it down instead of someone having to actually physically climb up the pole to lower the flag, um, Officer Bergeron had to do it for the, uh, when we had to bring it down, um, to half-mast, and when he went to come down off the pole, he actually hurt himself coming down, so I would rather not have to fill out any more paperwork for people getting hurt, so I'm gonna talk to Travis about lowering that, if a new rope has to be installed, that is another issue that I would, we're probably gonna take a field trip down to the rec field to see what can be done about that flagpole.
And it's my hope that eventually we can potentially, possibly look at the new facilities person as someone that can keep an eye on flags, seeing as he has a well-established passion for flags.
Oh, let me tell you, he was, we were all getting driven nuts, that the state flag was up above the American flag for the last two weeks.
Yeah.
Who, who did that?
Because, and, cause Chief has been handling it for the most part with the.
State flag above the US?
Uh-huh, and then get dropped when the American got dropped, so, but I don't know if there's an issue with it, so, I'm, I'm, yeah, we don't, I have no idea.
I don't know, I don't know that pole, that, that rope system can make it come down.
Who, who did that?
Bergeron, oh, no, I don't know who dropped it, he was trying to raise it, or did, was he trying to drop it, Bergeron?
What, when he came down off the flagpole himself, he had lowered the American flag, jumped down to.
Yeah. Okay.
That's so, that's so kids in the, can't play with it, right?
Get down, and then go on to the next one.
Yeah.
Right, that's why they're up there, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then he jumped down to, and then it didn't, he didn't get to the next one, because he had hurt himself, so.
Get down. Hey.
Wow.
Anything else?
As a little, as a little sidebar, there is somebody in town that has been, um, mismanaging those flags for quite a while, and I've tried for over ten years to figure out who it is, but I can't seem to track the person down. At any rate, um.
That's another thing that needs to go in the software.
I can get you a, uh, a new flag, yeah.
New flag?
Well, just, they need to be replaced, they're so old.
To put up there, um.
Yeah, probably, okay.
We can, we can, if you can verify if the pulley system is still good, if the rope is still there.
I will.
We can put it right up. Um, the other day we talked about that fire truck at the meeting over there, the new fire truck we're planning on order. Um, do we know of an existing, of a, of said fire truck in a, in a local community? My concern is that the fire truck isn't gonna fit in the firehouse over here.
Talk to the chief about that.
I had one person tell me it would fit, I had another person tell me, tell me it wouldn't fit. So, do we know of any other community that has the exact fire truck that we wanna order?
I can look into that, I'm not one hundred percent.
And can we ask them to drive it down here, and, you know, this doesn't have to happen quickly?
Yeah.
But, um, I'd like to actually see a fire truck that we wanna order fit in that barn, as opposed to
Back in.
have one person tell me it's gonna fit, and another person tell me it's not.
Madam Clerk?
Heather?
Here she comes.
Here she comes.
Heather, if in Paxton you ran into the Paxton Town Administrator, could you ask them if they had a truck that was similar to the one we wanna order, and if so, do they think it would fit in Station One?
Not think, we need to do.
Yeah, we need to know.
We need to verify that it fits.
Yeah, I thought Seth already answered that question last, last time.
It was answered last time in the affirmative, but it was also answered in the negative. So I wanna see the exact fire truck we're gonna order actually fit in that building.
Well, what we can probably have Nate do is ask him if he can happen to reach out to, have our fire chief reach out to Paxton's fire chief and see if there's any chance they could come over, well, I don't know if I'd wanna stick that Paxton fire truck in cause it'd get stuck, and that could be a problem, but, um.
Well, we would stop, we would stop before we actually.
At least to get the specific measurements.
Or at least, yeah, if we have exact measurements, then go back.
Exact measurements, I, I don't want measurements, cause I wanna see the truck go in the building, because there's a lot more to it than just the height of the truck and the height of the door.
Can I bring up a question?
No, I, I agree with you, KP, my only concern is, uh, if for some reason someone is off even a little bit when they back the truck up, then it's going to cause damage, and, you know, someone's gonna have to pay for the damage. And I don't think no one wants to pay for that.
I agree.
I think we could just ask the chief to reach out and see what he can perhaps talk to the Paxton fire chief about and see if there's something they can do to, if we get a little more assurance. I think that's what you're looking for, KP, right, assurance that it really does fit.
I want, I want a hundred percent assurance, yes.
We will work towards one hundred percent assurance by the time we have that conversation. There's still a lot of fiscal conversation before.
Yeah. But I thought we had spoken about, why would we want a truck to fit in that old shitty-ass fire station when we're trying to project forward and get into?
That's also part of the conversation.
Right, that's what, I, I don't understand why would we want something to fit into that fire station that's kinda liable to fall down at any moment?
It's not gonna fall back on Hubbardston.
No, no, but you know what I mean.
It's not having.
Not to mention the cost of having to have it custom-made.
Amazing track record of approved projects.
Well, that was the thing, is it wasn't gonna be a different price because of that size.
Yep.
It was actually, um, a better bang for our buck, was what Seth was saying.
Crab apple, if you would.[1727.88]